Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for February 6, 2023. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern, to speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. At this time, I'd like to introduce members of the Planning Commission. On my far left, Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary. On his right, Carol Fisher, our Secretary. On my left, Connie Gah is our Recording Secretary. I'm Don Rethman, the Vice Chair. With an excused absent tonight is Ray Waskey, who is the Chair. And at this time, we do have a open position for a Planning Commissioner. Members of staff present this evening, Tom Robillard, Director of Planning and Development, and Ryan Hamzy, City Planner. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of January 23, 2023. Do we have any comments on the minutes as presented?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes, January 23, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. One thing I will mention, since we are just three commissioners here this evening, any action that the commission takes needs to be unanimous for it to happen. So 2-1 is no good. So at this point, do we... Mr. Hamzy, do you have an item you'd like to bring up?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I would suggest that the second... or the first item under New Business Zoning Code Amendments be moved to the end of the agenda, because we have people here for the other two cases, and I don't believe anyone's in attendance for that item.
Okay. So you're suggesting that it moves after the item number four?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to modify our agenda to move the second item, which is the zoning code amendments for PC 23-001, after item number four?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. New item number two on tonight's agenda is a replat/record plan approval for 1289 David Road. It is PC-23-003. Mr. Hamzy?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a fairly straightforward request of a neighbor. The property owner at 1289 East David Road, which is this lot right here, would like to purchase a portion of the property to the north, which is a larger piece of land owned by Marshall Road First Church of God. The red outline here depicts the approximate outline of what would be the new property... the new lot should this record plan be approved and recorded. And currently, the subject property sits right here. There's two zoning districts that cover the subject properties. The house and the portion of the property they'd like to buy to the north is in the office zoning district, and then the piece that would go over to the east is zoned R2. Here's just the... Kind of hard to see. I have some more graphics on the next couple of slides. Here's the actual record plan. The existing lot lines are shown there. Whoops, sorry. And the proposed lot lines are here. You can just see that property at 1289 would absorb a portion of the two parcels to the north, and it would measure about 10,000 square feet in size, which would bring it into compliance with the minimum lot size of the O zoning district. And one unique part of this request, there's actually a public right-of-way for Flowerdale Avenue that runs to the east, but it's unimproved once you get back to where this is going to be. But it'll still meet... The piece of the property that'll touch that right-of-way still meets the minimum frontage requirement of both the office and R2 zoning districts. So from a zoning code perspective, it's actually bringing the minimum lot size into compliance. The existing frontage on East David is staying the same. And then the piece that'll touch Flowerdale Avenue right-of-way is going to meet the minimum frontage requirements. So it meets all the base zoning standards. The subdivision requirements included in Section 1117.03 of Kettering's Codified Ordinances are all met by the record plan we received. The one exception to that is the standard that is always met once the Mylar comes in, and that's that the final record plan be certified by the surveyor or engineer. So we will recommend that that is one condition. And I did check the years on this record plan, and they're left blank, so they can be corrected to be 2023. So it meets that expectation. So staff does have a recommendation, but before I get to that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any commissioners have any questions regarding this case from Mr. Hamzy?
I don't have anything.
I don't have any questions either, so at this point, if we can have your recommendation.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission motion... Actually, I have the wrong... I put the wrong year right here after making sure it's right on the record plan. The Planning Commission motion to approve the record plan, case number PC-23-003, with the following condition, which must be met prior to the provision of Planning Commission signatures, and that's that the plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor.
All right. Ms. Fisher?
I do have the motion. Whereas, an application has been received from Robert W. Park, owner of the property at 1289 East David Road, Kettering, Ohio, 45429, requesting approval of a replat of 1289 East David Road and portions of 4,400 Marshall Road into a single new lot containing 0.2312 acres. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot, and whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by staff, and is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for Rupcon Park-B be approved with the following condition, which must be met prior to the provision of Planning Commission signatures, that the planning... that the plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Item number three under New Business this evening is a conditional use approval for 2185 Heritage Point Drive. It is PC-23-004, and this is a public hearing. Mr. Hamzy?
Thanks again, Chairman. This is a more unique request. There are some people here in the audience who I know will be speaking on this. But it involves the former Neils Heritage House at the kind of northwest of the intersection of West Shantzen Heritage Point Drive, highlighted in red here. It includes the property that has the former Neils Heritage House and the vast majority of the parking lot. And then there's a separate property also owned by Dayton History, where there's a house that's still used as a residential unit, kind of in the northern side... northern side of that property. Just to go over some of the existing conditions, this picture on the... in the bottom left there is looking south down Heritage Point. One of the bigger things you'll... bigger changes that happened to the property several months ago is a lot of those walls that used to run along that side of the property were removed, and some of the parking lot was carved up for the purpose of providing some required landscaping areas. And here's another picture, kind of looking southwest toward the public right-of-way of South Patterson Boulevard. Here's the parking lot today. And when I'm presenting... During this report, one item that'll kind of get a decent amount of focus deals with this northwest corner of the site, where there's still a section of wall standing, and they'll be carving... The plan that we've gotten shows some of that being carved up. But this is a picture looking south from Maple Crest, and this is the former Neils Heritage House building here. And then there is a public sidewalk that connects the subject site and an alley down to South Patterson Boulevard, and that's what's shown in this picture here, kind of looking north towards South Patterson. And the subject site is shown right here. There's two zoning districts that cover the subject property. The northern portion is all zoned office, and the southern portion, which really is just the area that includes the building, is zoned B, business. Included in the report that went out was a site improvement plan that we've gotten from the applicant. It's fairly detailed. I wanted to add the caveat here. I believe I included it in the report as well. The vote tonight is not necessarily on this strict site plan. It's on the use. The site plan that comes in will have... If it gets approved, the site plan that comes in will have to meet the requirements of the zoning code, plus any conditions the Planning Commission may impose on the review tonight. So here's a... Just to go over a quick summary of what's being proposed today on the document that we have... on the site plan that we have. This property's been vacant for long enough that a lot of the legal non-conformities that the site had no longer are valid. So when they reuse the property, they need to bring it into compliance with several standards of the zoning code. And if you look at the site plan, probably the biggest thing you'll notice along Heritage Point is, I believe right now, there's five access points to the parking lot that they don't meet our separation requirements. There's too many according to our zoning standards today, so they're going to consolidate those into just two, which meet the spacing requirements of the zoning code, one kind of toward the building, and the other one kind of on the northern end of the site before you get to the property that has the house on it. The other thing you'll notice is our zoning code requires a five-foot landscaping buffer along the public right-of-way where the road is, and they're going to be saw cutting the parking lot further than where it is today, back to create that five-foot area, and then installing the required shrubs and landscaping trees along that frontage. Within the parking lot, they're required to have a certain number of interior parking lot trees within islands and peninsulas. You can see some of the peninsulas here, some of the islands in the center here, and some more of those trees that they're proposing throughout the parking lot. And then similar to Heritage Point, Maple Crest is another frontage that they're required to create that landscaping area, to install the required street trees and the required hedge and buffering in that area. And then in the northwest corner of the site, the plan that went out showed the Type C buffer yard requirements with a hedge. We've talked to the property owner... or to the property owner and the applicant about substituting that hedge for actually a privacy fence, because where they're planting those... Excuse me. Where they'd have to plant those evergreen hedge plantings would be in soil that has been a parking lot for decades and probably not terribly hospitable. So we've asked... One of the conditions we're recommending is that instead of shrubs in that area, they use an actual privacy fence, and they're agreeable to that, both along that northwest corner of the site and along Maple Crest. Another thing that they're going to be proposing as a part of this is lighting improvements. They're required to meet our minimum lighting standards in the zoning code, which requires a certain amount of light be spread throughout the parking lot to ensure that it's usable in the evening, and there's not any excessively dark areas of the site. Some of the... I've already gone over a lot of these, but a lot of the conditions that are being recommended deal with buffering and lighting to ensure that the site is developed and used in a way that protects the adjoining property owners. Along Heritage Point, one of the recommended conditions, and this is really actually a requirement in the zoning code, if you're required to put in a screening hedge, it's required to be evergreen. And along public rights-of-way for parking lots, you're required to have a hedge that is at least two and a half feet tall that's evergreen to screen it from the road. So one of the conditions is just to ensure that that... those hedge plantings are evergreen plantings instead of deciduous along Heritage Point. And then this red line here, which butts up to the residential use that directly abuts the property to the northwest, we've... Again, I've requested to sub those evergreen hedge plantings for an actual privacy fence. And along Heritage Point, we've requested... We've suggested the same condition there, except along Heritage... Or I'm sorry, along Maple Crest, we've suggested the same condition, except that it be a three-foot-tall privacy fence. And an example of that is where the Hot Head Burritos is on East Stroup, close to Marshall, where they... I think that used to be a gas station, and if you go to old historic photos of that, they used to have a hedge along the street where the parking lot butts up to... I can't remember the street name there, but directly across the street is some residential uses. It used to be a hedge. It deteriorated over time, and they just made it into a fence when Hot Head Burritos went in, and it works just fine. Another focus of the report deals with stormwater management. This site developed at a time when there really... I'm not aware that there were any strict guidelines in terms of stormwater detention. But if you actually study the site and walk it, there actually is a somewhat functional system that directs water away from adjoining properties and into existing catch basins around the property. And we just want to make sure that as they... as they put curbing in and cut the parking lot up to make the landscaping areas, that it's done in a way that doesn't tilt the site toward any adjoining property... any adjoining residential properties, and it's done in a way that kind of keeps the same flow of water in terms of direction and speed from the site. And this is one photograph. This is the... At the northwest corner of the site, this picture is taken kind of looking south from Maple Crest. This is the one wall that's still standing. It's not in very good shape. The plan is to cut that down to a little bit above grade and then putting the concrete waterproof cap on top of that and creating the buffer yard and frontage landscaping areas on the outside... on the inside of that fence. And we just want to make sure that they don't tilt the site when they do that toward that house next door. And we, staff, met the property owner and the applicant out on the property a couple weeks ago to discuss this, and these are all things that can easily be done. We just want to put it on the public record that it's a potential concern. Here's a picture of that buffer yard area. This is that wall that's again in pretty bad shape. It'll come down, and it'll... It should be just above grade with the cap on top of it, and then the fence will go within this landscaping area here. And we want to make sure that when they cut up the rest of the parking lot here to create the buffering area, that it's tilted away from that house, and that's not very difficult to do. Here's a picture of the Maple Crest frontage. Another general comment is, ever since that wall that used to be there for a long time was removed, they haven't quite put the curbing in at this location yet or graded the site. When they do that, we'll want to make sure they do it in a way that prevents erosion from going onto the site and into the Dayton History-owned house, kind of in the northeast corner of the site. Here's just another picture looking towards South Patterson. And that somewhat... That functional system that exists in terms of directing water, if you walk the site, there's an intentional opening in the curb along that public path I mentioned earlier. And if you look down the hill toward where this intentional opening is, there's a catch basin down there that would take the water toward the stormwater system underneath Patterson. So we want to make sure they maintain that direction of stormwater flow, and they don't block it or redirect it in any way. So the... Now I'll get into the actual conditional use review. In the office zoning district, the proposed use for the parking lot portion of the property is to use it occasionally, up to about 40 days a year for bigger events, the museum as an overflow parking area. They might park... Employee vehicles might park here as well, and an occasional staging area for events at the main campus, kind of northwest of this site. And so it'll be a support function for the museum. And museums are a conditional use in the office zoning district, so that's why we're here tonight. And this request represents a new conditional use for that property. On top of the general conditional use standards, which I'll get into in a second, this property is required to meet the standards that are applicable just to museum and library uses, which are included in Section 1137.06.14 of the Kettering Zoning Code. And there's just four standards. The first one is that all structures shall be located at least 35 feet from any residentially used property, and that meets this requirement. The Heritage Point... or the Neils Heritage House building is well in excess of 35 feet from all the adjoining residential use properties. Letter B, and there's a condition staff is recommending related to this standard, that's that for all sites that do not have ingress and egress from a thoroughfare arterial or collector street, a traffic management plan shall be submitted in accordance with Section 1153.08.14, or recommending they do that as a condition. Letter C, such uses shall be... Shall be by a political subdivision or recognized 501(c)(3) organizations according to the IRS, and it meets that requirement. And then letter D deals with ensuring that the use meets the conditional use standards of Section 1153.08, which I'll get into now. Before conditional uses can be approved, they need to be reviewed based on several conditions contained in the zoning code in Section 1153.08.8. Letter A is that the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. We do have a site plan that's pretty close to complying with most things. We're still recommending some conditions that be made to that record plan... or to that plan to bring it fully into compliance, but this standard is conditionally satisfied. Letter B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located, and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same zoning district. Again, provided that the conditions staff is recommending regarding stormwater, lighting, and buffering are all met, this condition will be satisfied, because if the former Neils Heritage House building, which is about 24,000 square feet, were filled with office uses that are permitted by right in this zoning district, it would be used... could potentially be used in a much more intense way than the occasional use as overflow parking lot area. So we feel like this standard is satisfied. Letter C, adequate utilities shall be provided. The existing utilities are adequate for the proposed use, and there are no public improvements necessary nor are any proposed. So this standard is satisfied. Letter D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic ingestion on the public roads. The site is currently non-conforming with regards to access points on the Heritage Point. The site plan that has been submitted, which was included as Exhibit 1 in the staff report, would make the site compliant by consolidating the five existing access points into two, which would be spaced apart appropriately. According to the applicant, the site will be used sparingly up to about 40 days per year as an overflow parking lot for special events at the main museum campus and an occasional staging area for said events. So the amount of traffic to and from the site is expected to be minimal, especially when compared to the traffic that could be generated if the property were to be utilized fully with other uses permitted under the current zoning designations. Further, in order to comply with Section 1137.06.14.B, staff is recommending a condition that the required traffic management plan be submitted for review and acceptance prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the use on the site. So this requirement is satisfied. Letter E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The proposed use will not generate noxious or offensive vibration, odor, dust, noise, or gas. So this requirement is satisfied. Letter F, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes... for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood, as a couple of the other standards before this one, provided that the recommended conditions are met with the final plans for the property. Adequate buffering and controls on the site will be in place to prevent negative impacts on adjoining properties. The proposed lighting improvements to the site should result in improved security, while the aesthetic improvements will result in significant improvements to the appearance of the property compared to current conditions. This requirement is conditionally satisfied. Letter G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted within the zoning district. The proposed use will have no such effect. The intensity of the proposed use relative to activities... I'm sorry. Is minor relative to activities on some of the adjoining properties and those that would be permitted by right on the subject property if the property owner were to utilize the property to the fullest extent allowed by the Kettering zoning code. So this requirement is satisfied. Letter H, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed use will have no such detrimental effects, provided that the recommended conditions are met, and this requires... So this requirement is satisfied. And finally, letter I, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the proposed establishment of the proposed use. The proposed use will have no such adverse effects that must be outweighed. The site is expected to be used approximately 40 days per year, which will result in an increase in traffic on the days when the lot is in use. However, this traffic will be minimal relative to the potential impacts... the potential traffic impacts if the principal structure on the site were to be filled with office tenants in a code-compliant manner. Further, the improvements that must be made to the site in order to bring it into compliance with the Kettering zoning code will result in improved aesthetics and evening lighting for the property, which would be more supportive of the public interest and welfare than the existing conditions. And a lot of these comments dealt with traffic. During the review for this, we did speak... Talked to our engineering... Some of the representatives of our engineering department, and they'll help us review that traffic management study. And due to the location of the site, how Heritage Point is extra wide at that location, so long as wind vehicles are parking here, they're directed appropriately to enter off Shantzen or enter Heritage Point off Shantzen, and when they leave, just turn straight on the Heritage Point and exit the site. We don't anticipate any excess traffic going through the residential neighborhood, and that's all a part of what the traffic management plans are for. So with that, staff does have a recommendation, but I know there's people here to speak. But before they speak, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the commissioners? Mr. Hamzy? Mr. Lackey?
No, not right now.
Ms. Fisher? Okay. I have no questions at this time. As we'd mentioned, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward to speak, just asking you to come to the lectern and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm John Roll, Roll &amp; Associates. I'm the architect for this project, working with Dayton History. Ryan's pretty much laid it out. I just...
Give your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 3176 Kettering Boulevard nearby. Yeah, we've been working on this property for, I don't know, seven or eight years since Dayton History bought the property, I think around 2015, something like that. And working with Ron Hunt on mostly maintenance and repair issues. That's just... We've kind of... The project is sort of transformed from a maintenance-repair type of issue with all the, you know, the walls falling apart on it and the paving and curbs and sidewalks are not in good shape. But now it's sort of transformed into an actual new parking lot. We've... We're completely redoing the sidewalks and curbs, creating the landscape areas that Ryan talked about, both on Heritage Point and Maple Crest, and the buffer yard with the neighboring property. The lot was underlit, you know? We were addressing all those problems. We were confident that the few remaining details that are left, I think we can work out with Ryan. So yeah, what's precipitated things a little bit more is the fact that Dayton History actually is going to use the building. They have a team of people that do... They take their historical archives and digitize them. Mostly, it's a collection of historical photographs of primarily NCR plates. And so it doesn't require a big staff. There's maybe half a dozen people working there, but it does require some storage, and so they will use the building. Like Ryan said, the parking lot is... Will not be used by the staff on a daily basis hardly at all. But it will be the, what, 35 times a year, something like that. There might be some overflow parking from the main events at the Dayton History, the Caroline Campus. So anyway, so it'll be a very nice lot for occasional uses, and we feel like it's... It'll be a good neighbor and a... Be a big improvement. So we're happy to... Happy to answer any questions you have on that, but that's kind of where we've been coming from on this project.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Roll from commission?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to come forward?
My name is Tracy Gipson. Address 2110 Heritage Point Drive, across the street directly from this lot.
Good evening. Art Gipson. Same address.
Good evening, Art Gipson, same address.
Yes, we're not necessarily opposed to the site, it is currently a parking lot. However, we do have several concerns about this proposed plan, one of them being lighting. Dayton History recently installed extremely light bright and intrusive lighting on their existing building, and it's made a huge difference in our home in the evenings and all through the night. So we're certainly concerned about any other lighting that they may install, that that could also be intrusive to our home, because again, we are directly across the street. We are concerned about maintenance of any landscaping that goes in. Lands walls, brick walls were taken down earlier this summer and they were replaced with landscaping that simply wasn't maintained. We ended up with small lots of weeds across the street that we had to ask for them to come and take care of. So we have maintenance concerned, ongoing maintenance concerns of any landscaping that's put in. Again, we look forward to any improvement to this lot, but any improvements that go in are going to require a lot of maintenance. And because it is directly across the street, affects our value of life, it affects our property values, this is something that we feel very seriously would need to be addressed. We're also concerned with parking. Yes, the street is wide at that point, however, it is not a through street. It dead ends at one street or it almost dead ends at the end, it goes into Willow Grove. So there's simply a curve right here, the other end is Shant's. So there is not a lot of room for traffic to flow on this street. So if we're talking about a lot of people coming and going at the same time, it's certainly going to increase noise, it's going to increase in the incidental traffic concerns that might come along, such as safety for the kids that live on our street, for the older folks that live on our street. So we would be concerned that those be addressed and any traffic conditions that they come up with. Also, we park on our street, that's our parking for our homes. So if people are parking in the lot and it's full, we need to make sure that no one is going to be taking up parking in front of our homes, maybe, I don't know, continuing to party after they leave a party. And, you know, we go out and we have beer bottles in our neighbor in our yard the next day. And I realize this is simply something that will not be used every day, but it would be used enough that this would certainly be a property value concern for us. We're just concerned that this would change without proper care and maintenance by Dayton History, which we need to be would love to see addressed, that this would affect the the character of our neighborhood. It's a very quaint neighborhood, that's why we bought it, it's quiet, it's secretive, no one knows it's there. Now a bunch of people are going to know it's there. And so we're just concerned that it's going to change the character of our street, that's why we bought our home here in in Kettering, that's why we wanted to live here. So we have lots of concerns about this. Again, we're certainly not opposed, we're not here to say this is a terrible idea, but we have lots of things that we are definitely concerned about and will certainly be here to address them or hope to hear them addressed as this process continues, but we wanted to make sure that those all get noted.
All right, thank you very much.
Hello, Luke Miller, 2102 Heritage Point Drive. It's directly across from the residential building that's part of the the plan. And I'm sorry, I didn't plan on speaking, but just a couple of things popped into my mind. The property is used now for some of those big events, like Christmas tree sales, they've put up a lot. And just as an example, they the traffic plan would, it sounds like a great idea if people enter and exit and head directly to Shant's. Well, they end up getting confused or for whatever reason, and they go all the way down to the street, and it becomes a bit of a cluster because people don't realize they can get back over to Shant's on Willow Grove and they turn around. So I don't know if like signage or something, but it gets a little crazy. And then I was just, I had a question, I'm sorry, I don't know how these things work.
That's fine, just address any questions to the commission and we'll work on getting answers.
Like, it's now, I don't know how it works as far as if it's leased, but like, there's been a lot of construction that is done in the parking lot. And I was just curious if that is going to be a continued thing as planning for the parking lot. It seems like there was a lot of construction done in our neighborhood and they use it as a staging ground, which makes sense because they're doing stuff right there. But then it came to a point where there's construction stuff going on, and I don't know where they're doing the construction because it's not anywhere near us. And they they kind of get a little bit lax with taking care of some of their the different dirts and stuff, and everything gets blown off and ends up being a bit of a pain in the butt. I was just curious if that was going to continue or not. But other than that, thank you for the moment.
Oh, thanks for coming out. Does anyone else have any issues, items they'd like to bring up to the commission regarding Regarding some of the items that were brought up and maybe I'll just and maybe the applicant address some of these, so with regards to sort of the last one, the construction staging, is that something that's going to go forward? If you're gonna, if somebody wants to address that, if they can come forward and have your name and address, please?
Yes, Brady Cress, 1000 Carolon Boulevard. I'd be happy to address all these all these concerns. As far as staging, both of the the main times that's happened, we were approached to help other projects. Like, the first one was the replacement of a parking garage at the Carolan Tower, where they were redoing their parking. We were requested to let let them use this lot for that purpose. So we we did that mainly because the the other place across the way was the church that was, I don't know what church that is, but a church directly across from Carolan Tower. So that was that one piece. The the second time was a request that we were, we were actually requested by the city to help and let for 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 a gas main project or gas replacement projects of some type, and they requested that they use that lot. We have no, no love of having.
Part of your business plan?
Yeah, no, no love of having construction in that lot at all. And as soon as, it's certainly not after we replace and put do this work at the lot, put a new a new pad down and repair the lot, we're not going to want any construction traffic in there at all. This is a ending up being a very expensive project. And that includes, I'll say, that includes the the Christmas tree lot, which is not ours. That was, again, a request from a contractor who was was displaced from the former Montgomery County Fairgrounds, again, asked for a place to have the lot. And so we were accommodating that request. That that ends also, so this past year, that was that was not something we were doing as part of Carolan Park or Dayton History. So with regard to the to the lights, if I may.
Yeah, please.
We're concerned about that as well. There has been quite a bit, we have properties in Miami'sburg and Oakwood and Dayton, this is our property in Kettering. We've seen a significant amount of of graffiti and damage that we've tried to to catch up with. In fact, we we just these past few weeks, been replacing windows that have been smashed out from, I could, I could only assume, local kids that have have been damaging the building and and trying to stay ahead of it. One issue was getting power back into the building so that we could have some lighting so that some of this would would stop. We added some lighting and and we got a lot of graffiti just a number of weeks ago that we we tried to paint over right away. It's been an ongoing problem. With with regard to, so the the lighting is an attempt, not only tough to address some concerns from the the maintenance folks at the city, and I have, that was on a list that I received of of complaints for the city that we didn't have lights. So we we have fixed that problem. With regard to the lot, you know, we, this has turned out to be with the with the plantings, with the fencing, with the islands, with the curbs, with, we're going to be responsible to replace the sidewalk. It's become an expensive project. Our concern is that this lighting that's being recommended in the lot, while we're happy to comply, my concern is is how that affects the neighbors. This is a lot that's not going to be used often and certainly nowhere near the degree that it was used when it was Neils Heritage House. Late into the night with people who've been in the tenderloin room having adult beverages, we're not going to have any of that. And so it's the amount of, you know, depending on how long neighbors have lived in the area, significantly less traffic than when Neils was up and going through the 70s, the 80s, and the early 90s. So that's, you know, again, we're willing to comply, but if we don't need to spend the money on a lot of lighting out out in that lot, other than keeping the neighbors up, I don't know that it's going to be of much use to to us, unless we're talking about a security scenario next to the building. So that's, or that answers your question and probably much more, but.
I I believe that addressed the questions that were brought up by the the neighbors. Well, so, okay. Commissioners, anything?
I think in our report, you, there was something about hooded lighting.
Yeah.
Can you address that for us?
Yes, there there, the building now, if you go by at night, there's two, there's two types of lights that have been added. On the her on the Heritage Point side that's nearest, that's like the sconce type decorative lights. On the north side, kind of facing the parking lot, there's these wall packs that kind of shine out, and I'm assuming those are the issue. Those don't meet the zoning code because you're required to have fully cut off fixtures that only shine down and that aren't adjustable. So the lighting plan that we have, which isn't necessarily final for this plan, it was designed in a way that lights the parking lot without the fixtures that are on the north side of the wall. So the sconce lights, those are perfectly fine, those can, those will stay. And there's some fully cut off fixtures on the wet on the west side closer to that alley, but on the north side, those lights that are, they are fairly bright in the evening, those, the plan is to take the, my understanding is the plan is to take those down. Once the other poles go up and you, under the zoning code, has to be fully cut off. And when I get to the recommendation, one of the conditions is if issues arise, just shield the sources. But LED lights today are so advanced that when they're fully cut off, you can direct each individual diode almost, and they're pretty easy to ensure that you don't, like, throw a bunch of light onto a neighbor. And there's a code requirement that prevents you from doing that as well.
Okay, thanks.
And then.
All right, I I was going to bet you too. I do, I do apologize for the the kind of stop-start part of this, the the wall project and the parking lot in particular. We started with that project thinking that we had the okay to move ahead and with a number of of changes and some some calls, it was kind of stopped. So the the wall removal was finished, the the grass that was put in there was temporary to hold, it was supposed to take root so that it mitigated any soil loss, but that was not the landscaping plan. Everything was was put stalled because of that. So it was an embarrassing scenario. We don't want it to look like that either. So we're, once we get going here, we're excited to have something that we can be proud of and hopefully the neighbors are proud of and we can move forward with, so.
And I think this be directed at at staff. I mean, there was a concern brought up about the on-street parking being sort of the parkings for their house, but I'm assuming that's public parking, so short of having your vehicle parked on days when an event's going on, in terms of reserving spots in front of their house?
There's not an easy way to, you can't really guarantee someone a public parking space, but the one, if you look at the plan, one thing they're doing that I mentioned earlier is closing three of the curb cuts. So doing that will add more street park and then what's there today, because you can, instead of a curb cut being in the way, there's a place to park. And there will be, I think, I think the number's like 170 spaces in the lot. And that actually comes into the traffic, the traffic, excuse me, the traffic management plan idea, the comment about people getting confused in the neighborhood when the Christmas tree lots there, great comments, because a big part of the traffic management plan is how are you, people who park up here, how are you going to direct them? Are you going to give them directions to to first of all, get to the lot, and then second of all, to leave? I mean, I know Dayton History has a lot of experience planning events and stuff like that, so that's some of the stuff we're going to look at to make sure that when people are up here, they clearly know how to get there, how to get into the lot, and how to leave when it's time to go home. And that might involve signage, like on Heritage Point, directing people to turn towards Shant's. It's something we look at as a part of the traffic management plan. But in terms of public parking, I I would hope that if they have an event and they're directing people up here, that it's not, there's an understanding that once the lot's full, go somewhere, don't just park in the street.
Right.
But public parking in the street's a very difficult issue to deal with.
Yeah, understand. Okay. Is there anyone, anyone else in the audience, public, would like to address it? Sure, come on down.
Hello, my name is George LaBuff. I'm going to use, I own, this is the northwest corner, I own the building at the southeast corner, so I'm going to use my business address there of 2208 South Patterson. And I'm just thinking, and I love what you're doing, I don't want to add to your expense, but I'm listening and you're going to have event parking, makes perfect sense. And that sidewalk, he pointed out, is going to be a way for people to walk down to your main facility. I'm curious, and maybe you know this, how about the growth and the landscaping there when you walk up South Patterson, down to the lawyer, to the law firm? Who who maintains that? Would that be your responsibility here? Do you know? That's my question.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's normally if you're, this is a unique situation, so I don't have 100% certainty on who's responsible maintaining of it. Normally, if you have a sidewalk and like a tree lawn, this is a unique one, it's the responsibility of the adjoining property owner to maintain some of that. In this particular case, I mean, it's clear, when I've walked it, since I've, the year and a half that I've been here, I've walked it several, I've walked up and down the path several times. Do you, do we maintain that at all?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe the city maintains that.
You have, we have. So many things that run in nine years' time. I think if you walked it, you know nobody's maintaining. It's very simple, but again, I don't want to add to, what is it again? History, Dayton History Organizations? Dayton History.
Excuse me, could you go?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I should have, yeah.
I certainly don't want to add to his burden. I've walked that many, many times, and nobody maintains it. And it's not just the overgrown, it's trashy. There's a lot of trash. So I'm just throwing it out there.
That's a very good question, and my trusty sidekick, Ryan, will find the answer tomorrow.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you for your question.
Buddy, introduce myself again? Okay. I just wanted to to address the concern about public in the parking, that the intent, when I wrote the report or submitted the report, was that that this is overflow parking for staff, not for not for guests necessarily. I guess they're certainly welcome to to go in there. Most of those folks want to be down in Carolan Park. The idea is to free up Carolan's parking and have any kind of staging for our concor, for example, or fleur happen in this lot and and staff parking. So I guess I I don't want folks to think that that's our plan, is to have guests to Carolan Park parking up there, trying to find their way down. It was really a staff parking issue, either during events or when we eventually hopefully have this as a archive archive center.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else? Does anybody else want to address any of the the comments or answers given? All right, staff recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a staff recommendation, which covered some of the comments that came up, is that the planning commission. the planning commission motion to approve the conditional use permit, case number PC-23-004, with the following conditions. Number one, a privacy fence or wall be utilized in place of a hedge in the northwest corner of the site along Maple Crest and the adjoining residential property. Number two, any light poles installed in the northern section of the site, as shown in attachment D in your report, be no taller than 20 feet, and that's more focusing on the adjoining residential property to the northwest, sits much lower than this property, so effectively it'll be a little taller. Number three, if needed, shields be installed on the light fixtures on the site to help obscure the light sources from adjoining residential uses. Number four, the existing direction of stormwater flow be maintained and the conditions on the site meet the applicable stormwater and erosion requirements of Kettering's Property Maintenance Code. And number five, as required under section 1137.06.14.B of the Kettering zoning code, a traffic management plan be submitted for review and acceptance by the City of Kettering prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the subject development. And number six, should the existing retaining wall in the northwest section of the site be removed, a plan for that area must be submitted that shows how stormwater will be prevented from running onto adjoining properties. And I meant to cover this earlier, that's really meant to make sure that that wall's been there a long time, so when they cut it down to grade, or cut it down to about grade, if it's, if they find out that it's in such bad shape, they have to remove it, they need to give us a plan to show how they're going to ensure that that side of the site remains tilted to keep the stormwater from running onto that person's property. So that's why that condition is there.
Okay. All right. Any commission comments on the proposed motion?
Yeah. Mr. Homsley, we do not have a condition that deals with landscaping. Is there a reason we do not, or is it not necessary?
You mean a condition about like maintenance?
Well, not maintenance, but we talked a lot about a landscaping plan for the lot, but there's no condition here for them to do that.
Well, yeah, there's not a condition on here because that's just a requirement of the zoning code. The only conditions that we're recommending to deal with buffering and landscaping are, like in that northwest section, they can technically, under the, under the minimum zoning requirements, use a hedge, but we want them to use a fence. We want them to do a little more than what's required. So they're required to put the frontage landscaping in, they're required to have an evergreen hedge along Heritage Point and along Maple Crest. They're required to have interior parking lot landscaping, so the reason it's not a condition is because it's already required.
Okay.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and before we close the public hearing, is there anyone in the public who would like to make additional comment, or based on the recommendation of Seeing no one has come forward at this point, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Mr. Lackey, I believe you have a motion.
I do. I have a conditional use approval motion for 2185 Heritage Point, whereas an application has been received from John Roll, AIA of Roll &amp; Associates, 3176 Kettering Boulevard, Dayton, Ohio, 45439, agent to the property owner of 2185 Heritage Point Drive, requesting approval of a conditional use to allow the use of the property at 2185 Heritage Point Drive, Kettering, Ohio, as a support function of the Carolan Historical Park Museum campus, and whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a hearing on February the 6th, 2023, and whereas this request constitutes an approval of a conditional use to allow the use of the property at 2185 Heritage Point Drive as a support function for Carolan Historical Park Museum campus, as an occasional overflow parking area and staging area for museum events, and whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of facts presented by staff in the report, which is incorporated into this motion. I move the applicant's request for approval for conditional use to allow for use of the property located at 2185 Heritage Point as a support function of the Carolan Historical Park Museum, as an occasional overflow parking area and staging area for museum events be granted with the following conditions. Condition one, a privacy fence or wall be utilized in place of a hedge in the northwest corner of the site along both Maple Crest and the adjoining residential property. Condition two, any light poles installed in the northern section of the site, as shown in attachment D, be no taller than 20 feet. Condition three, if needed, shields be installed on light fixtures on the site to help obscure the light sources from adjoining residential uses. Condition four, the existing direction of stormwater flow be maintained, and the conditions on the site meet the applicable stormwater erosion requirements of Kettering's Property Maintenance Code. Condition five, as required under section 1137.06.14.B of the Kettering zoning code, a traffic management plan be submitted for review and acceptance by the City of Kettering staff prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the subject development. And six, should the existing retaining wall in the northwest section be removed, a plan for that area of the site should be submitted that shows how stormwater will be prevented from running onto adjoining properties.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. All right. Item number four, under new business, is the zoning code amendments, PC-23-001. This is a public hearing. We'll just give everybody a minute or two to file out, or you're all welcome to hear this next public hearing. All right. At this point, we will get restarted with item number four, under the new business, which was the zoning code amendments, PC-23-001. This is a public hearing. It's good to see that the public is involved in what goes on in their community.
Uh-oh. Oh, there it goes. All right. We're good. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. This is going to be a pretty quick item. We were initially planning on having the full ordinance ready to go, some stuff came up that led to tonight just being a work, more of a work session to talk about a couple items in the zoning code, potential change to the zoning code, want to get your thoughts on them. Just to give a quick update, we had a work session on November 7th, and then tonight, this is, this is actually a, this is actually a public hearing, but after tonight's meeting, we'll continue to draft that ordinance and we'll probably bring it back. I think we, the third Monday this month is holidays, we won't be here, but probably the first Monday in March, we'll have our official public hearing on the whole ordinance based on what we talk about tonight. So the first item, which I covered in the memo, deals with our, the standard in Kettering zoning code today, under the chapter that covers standards for specific uses. Canopy heights, and this is not measured, this is not the clearance height measurement, it's the total height to the top of the canopy for fueling stations. It's only 16 feet in height, and we had gotten some questions about that number being a little bit low. So we did a survey of...
Just having them back in.
So we did a survey, we had a survey, excuse me, we did a survey of many of our existing fueling stations, just to see what the existing clearance height is, and you can usually add about two feet, two and a half feet to that, to get the actual total height of the canopy. And based on looking at several fueling stations in the city, other than maybe the Clark Station on South Dixie, none of the existing fueling stations meet the 16-foot requirement. The median clearance height is about 15 feet, three inches, so you get about 17 and a half feet, give or take, 18 feet is the typical height you have on fueling stations. So based on that, is there any interest in adjusting the maximum canopy height for fueling and charging, recharging stations, based on this table?
One of the reasons why this came up is because we're getting an awful lot of requests for gas stations and fuel stations, and it was questioned of us about the height of canopies. So we thought we'd bring it up, because there's been a lot of fueling stations being requested, as you can see from other communities are popping up quite a bit. So we thought we'd bring this up and discuss it with you, see what your thoughts are.
Mr. Lackey, Ms. Fisher?
Well, I'm glad they listened to us when they built the stations and followed up on the code. So we're looking at, do we know when the one Speedway on Dorothy Lane, 19 feet?
Yeah, that, that one's heavily screened, because that, when I saw that number, I was like, really? I can't really picture that. And I, I drove by, I'm like, well, no wonder, there's, like, that's one of the ones that's a pretty mature tree canopy in front of it, so when you're on the site, it's bigger. But the, I don't think this standard existed until 2015. I don't think the old code had that requirement. If I, I would have to confirm, but I'm fairly certain it was not in the old code.
I mean, I'm all for, if we're going to have something in the code, and if we're getting pushback from people in the industry that it's too low, then I'd say, well, let's take a look at adjusting it and, you know, so hopefully that people can comply. And, you know, we'll sort of, you know, maybe bring everybody else in, maybe, a little closer into compliance versus everybody being a, you know, non-compliant use, so.
Have we checked other neighboring communities, what their heights are?
We've done some research, kind of just, not just in the neighboring area, but there are some that you can find, but it's not a very common standard that I've seen that has a canopy height.
It's fluid.
Like, like regionally. I can't, there might be some that have it, but it's not like a, like the next chapter we're going to, next section we're going to cover, every, most cities have standards related to that. This is not a standard that's super, super common. I can see why it exists, because as more time goes on, things keep getting bigger and bigger, and people start taking advantage of where they can, and suddenly you have canopies that meet the maximum height requirement, they're like 45 feet tall. So it makes sense to cap them. We just want to make sure they're cap, we just want to make sure they're capped in a way that is, matches what exists and kind of just the industry standard. And the number that we have in our head is six, is 18 feet, like two extra feet, not necessarily making everything suddenly compliant, but just, but I can do some more research on that to see if any other local, there's none that I can think of off the top of my head that have a cap on the...
No, but I agree with you. If you, if you don't have a cap, they will certainly take advantage of that, or can take advantage of that. So I think it would be in our best interest to do that.
I mean, I think at some level, I mean, because, you know, bigger equals more costly, and so that there's sort of, you know, a cost benefit thing from somebody who's going to install a canopy of, you know, how big or whatever you want to do it. I mean, if somebody's all of a sudden wants to, you know, make the canopy, you know, eight feet wide because they want to put a big sign on the side, well, I mean, we've got signage ordinances that would, would address that, so I mean, there's, there's not necessarily the benefit from that standpoint of trying to have something that's, you know, really tall and basically, you know, creating like a billboard, at least, I'm assuming that's the case.
We went through that with the sign code.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it looks like, I mean, if there was no code before, it looks like nobody's gone crazy on heights, on what they've, on what they've put in. But it looks like that that is a, that 15 feet clearance is about what, 15, 16 feet clearance is what most of them are targeting here, so.
Yeah, and then a two-foot.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense to raise ours up a little bit.
Yeah. You know, I suppose it could make sense if we had a, a certain height limit for canopies that are within a certain distance of residential properties versus, you know, around Meyer, which is pretty, you know, car-oriented, suburban, but 18 feet is probably good enough for any situation.
Reasonable.
And I do think that even some of the issues, as those canopies get taller, the main issue is, is the lighting, but I know that, you know, we do have lighting standards in place, and, you know, it used to be that the light sort of hung down, and, you know, you had the whole glare issues, and now I think typically you have more, they're recessed in the canopy, they're cutoff-type fixtures. So the light, even though they are typically pretty bright under a fueling canopy, you know, it's not like you have that light going horizontally as, as much.
Yeah. And the way that the lighting standard is for canopies, the fixtures have to be either recessed or flush with the canopy, and we could make that requirement that they need to be recessed. I mean, everyone is capable of doing that these days, and we have a maximum average light level for canopies, so we could look into that a little bit, too.
Anything else regarding this portion?
No.
Okay.
There's other. The next one deals with looking at our, and this is more just like a brainstorming session to see kind of initial thoughts, looking at the recre, RV and trailer height limitations in the code that we have today. Before the new code was adopted in 2015, you were limited, one vehicle per property, either 8,000 pounds and 10 feet tall, or less than 8,000 pounds and 30 feet long. It was limited to only being in the rear yard, and it had to be fully screened with a six-foot fence or hedge, and if it wasn't inside or under a carport, then it had to be at least 10 feet from all lot lines. The current standard lowered the height to, from 10 feet to eight feet. Anything over 30 feet, anything over eight feet tall or 30 feet long must be kept indoors. If the vehicles are between six to eight feet in height, they're permitted in the side and rear yards and must be screened by a six-foot fence or wall or an eight-foot evergreen hedge. If six feet in height or less, they have to be at least three feet from all lot lines, and if they fall within that six to eight feet in height category, they have to be at least six feet from all lot lines. And I believe there's a discussion with council a while ago about this, where they asked kind of, asked the planning commission what they think, and as a part of that council discussion, some research was done on what some, some surrounding jurisdictions do. For the most part, other than Beaver Creek, none allow front yard parking of recreational vehicles. Side yard parking is permitted anywhere except in Centerville, or, yes, permitted anywhere, at least on the areas that were studied. Rear yard parking is permitted everywhere except in Centerville. They're required to be on a hard surface in all the jurisdictions studied. There were screening requirements in all of them except Beaver Creek, and in terms of the limitation on the number you're allowed to have, Kettering was the only community that had no limit, and that was one of the changes that was made between the old code and the current code. It used to have a limit of two, now there's no limit, but there's stricter standards in terms of how, how big they can be. In terms of the size limitations for those same jurisdictions, Kettering's limitation for outdoor parking is no taller than eight feet, no wider than eight feet, and no longer than 30 feet. Centerville is similar, but they can, in terms of width, but they can be up to 12 feet tall and 30 feet long, but again, in Centerville, they can only park in the side yard. And Beaver Creek, they have no size limitation. In Springbrough, they can be 10 feet wide and 30 feet long, and there doesn't seem to be a height limitation, and in Miami'sburg, there's no size limit. So in studying kind of, were you going to say something?
Yeah, sure. So I made this presentation to city council, because there were some questions from residents about our enforcement activity on RVs. And so what came of it was the city council asking me to talk to the planning commission about potential changes. The only change that I had suggested was potentially increasing the height from eight feet to 10 feet. 10 feet is the average height of RVs, whether it's the motor coach or a trailer. The only, realistically, the only trailer that comes under eight feet is a pop-up. So every RV that you see out there is non-conforming. They're taller than eight feet. So... So the question is, is, is that okay? You know, the average height is 10 feet. Uh, that, that maroon one is obviously bigger than 10 feet, but these are about 10 feet. Those are class C-type vehicles. Uh, the travel trailers typically are eight feet. A small one would be less than eight feet, but that's, those are kind of, uh, a rare exception. Yeah. So there's a table. Average types are between nine and 10, uh, feet. Everything else fits our, uh, standards for parking. So the question is, if we want to allow RV parking in residential areas, we would have to increase the height, uh, because basically they're, they're all over eight feet, other than pop-up trailers. It was kind of a value judgment of...
I looked it up today and yes, the average, the, the standard height of even a, a truck pulled camper is 10 feet. So I understand that. I don't, I just don't happen to think it's a good idea. Because if we have a, a fence that's six foot tall, you're still, you know, there's a big difference that you can't cover that up. And 20 foot long, that's a, that's taking up somebody's backyard potentially.
They can get very big.
I don't, I just don't like that. If I were living there, I wouldn't want to look out my back window and see three feet of, you know, of a camper.
Yeah.
So if it were screened in some way, that would be one thing, but if it's not screened, I'd, I think that's an imposition on the neighboring property owners.
Great.
So is the issue then council brought to us up is that people do have these and the fact that they're not compliant right now and the city's not doing anything? Or is it the fact that people want to store their RV there and current regulations don't allow it?
People want to store their RVs, current regulations don't allow it. Uh, the city council asked me, what should we do about it? I said, well, let's let the planning commission discuss it and, because that's your job.
Yep.
Well, again, my thought is, I don't want to look out my back window and even with a six-foot fence, I don't want to see four foot of somebody's RV. And I think, I, again, I think it's an imposition on the neighboring property owners to do that.
On a lot of our smaller properties, um, that are more densely developed, they can look really big.
No, like you said, you had Springbrough and you had Centerville. Those are much bigger, for the most part, much bigger lots or acreage even. And a lot of Kettering, which is landlocked, is, is more densely populated than Springbrough.
So when we adopted the eight-foot limit, was that the intent was to, to limit them to just basically the pop-up trailers to be parked?
Uh, it wasn't necessarily intended to limit it to just pop up, but it was intended to limit the height so that it wasn't going to be imposing on, like, uh, Carol said, on neighboring properties.
And I think you said, but what, how long has that been in place?
Uh, about, well...
2015.
2015.
That's when we changed it from 10 to eight, yeah.
Has there been a lot of enforcement of violations?
Uh, there has. It is not, going after RVs is not our number one priority. Uh, there's a, a lot of problem properties out there that our three property maintenance inspectors are very busy with. But when we do come across them, particularly on, on a property that there's other violations with, we will enforce it. And then, of course, that, that usually makes those that have the RVs not very happy that, when they see, you know, 10 other RVs in the neighborhood that are that big. So we ended up, we end up doing a neighborhood sweep at times.
Are, are they frequently precipitated from complaints by neighbors?
Yes.
They are? Okay. Of their, looking at them?
Yes.
Well, I think I've put in my two cents, clearly.
I mean, I don't have an RV and I don't know that in my neighborhood, there's anybody who's storing those, but I do, as you're driving around, you can see one when there's a big one. It's, it's a big thing and, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm torn a little bit because, I mean, at some level, it's like, oh, you know, hey, you know, Kettering's great, just don't own an RV.
Yeah.
Well, we used to own a boat and we kept it in storage. We would bring it to our house to load it up to go boating. But other than that, we kept it in a storage facility. And I'm, I think that's what other people should do also. They should be respectful of their property and their neighborhood.
Are they allowed to park them on the street?
Are they allowed to park them on the street?
Yeah.
No. Uh, you can park on the street for, I think it's 72 hours.
72 hours.
Yeah. For loading, basically loading, unloading, yeah.
At times. So I just wonder what the rules for that were.
You certainly don't need to give us, uh, an answer now.
Sure.
But, uh, think it over and, uh, you know, as you're driving around neighborhoods, keep your eye open and see what you think.
If they could be screened properly, I wouldn't have a problem, but I, I do have an issue with screening.
Yeah.
And I, and I appreciate a six-foot fence and I appreciate 10-foot, um, trees, you know? And that would be great, but you can't guarantee that. And it's still, you still got an extra five or six feet to look at.
Can you go back to that, uh, table showing the, the one that had the different communities?
Oh.
Sorry.
I know, you're good.
This one or the other one?
Uh, it was the one that had Centerville and Beaver Creek and...
This one?
Yeah, the table.
Yeah. Centerville doesn't have anything. Beaver Creek, Springbrough and Miami'sburg all have a lot bigger lots and areas than Kettering does. That's all there is to it. They don't have the density in the amount that we do.
No doubt.
Not that most people would want to do that, but they could build a garage that would accommodate that.
Yes. They can certainly do that.
I mean, assuming that you, your lot's big enough that you'd meet all the side yard setbacks and everything else and whether then your accessory building gets to be larger than is allowed by...
Gets too high than, too high than the house.
Some little, small properties that if you try to park a, uh, a really big trailer in it, it would probably not be compliant because it would be, what is it, you're allowed, what, one-third of your square footage for an accessory building?
For accessory stru, accessory structures are ba, storage buildings are based on the footprint of your house, like subtracting the storage. So you take the footprint, if you have an attached garage, you subtract that and 80% of the footprint.
Okay.
And then the height, I mean, if you have a huge one of these, even if you can get the square footage, the maximum height of 15, uh, for a, or the height of the house, whatever's less, you might have a hard time getting a, you know, be able to get like a scissor truss and a unique door on there to make it work, but it'll be a challenge.
Yeah. So the answer is that yes, you can, but it's probably difficult unless you have a large house on a big property.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional comments by staff? Uh, and this is a public hearing, so at this point, if there's anyone out there in the audience who would like to address the commission regarding this, now is your opportunity. Seeing that no one is wishing to come forward, do we have a motion to, uh, continue this, uh, item to a...
I got the date on here.
Future date?
It's, uh...
To March 6th, is it?
March 6th.
To March 6th, leaving the public hearing open.
In county, in city council chambers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms., Mr., Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is audience participation. If there, uh, you know, if you have something else that you'd like to address the commission, now's your opportunity. Seeing that no one is coming forward, uh, other business, signing of Platts.
There are none.
Communications and reports?
There are none.
All right.
Yeah, just, just one. Uh, so the, the beginning, at the first part of this year, the city council is embarking on a, uh, strategic planning process. Hasn't been widely announced throughout the community yet because we're, we're just getting started on it. And the, uh, city council will, probably in mid-February, decide how they want to rule out the citizen participation aspect of the plan. But it is a really good opportunity for, for the city to come up with some strategic, uh, plans for the governance of, of the city. Uh, we expect that, uh, you all, the planning commission will have involvement in it as well as, uh, other boards and commissions, city staff, and of course, um, citizens throughout the city. Uh, so look forward to more being ruled out on that in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Planning Commission comments, Mr. Lackey?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher? All right. I have no comments. So with that, we will adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for February 6th, 2023, until our next regularly scheduled meeting at 8:25 PM.